It says we're streaming live traces, is that correct?
We are.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'd like to call this Board of Commissioners meeting to order, and everyone, please stand for the pledge. A pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have, everyone, I'm sure has received their minutes, a motion to approve the reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Hart, any questions from the public on agenda items?
No, we received no emails.
Okay. Okay, then the first thing we're going to talk about is United Way, Lackawanna and Wayne County kickoff. Jason Cavulich and Gary Drapak.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning.
Thank you, Jason, Gary.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Drapak.
How are we doing, Mr. Drapak?
Jason, who's going to start, yourself or Mr. Drapak?
Mr. Drapak.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Well, Commissioners, good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity again to speak with you. Just very briefly, we're about, we have begun our United Way campaign back in September, and running through the 19th of November, I don't have to tell anyone online right now that these are very interesting times for all of us. We are seeing an increase in requests for services from individuals who never came to United Way before seeking help. We were able, thanks to a group of agencies that pulled together back in March. I have to tell you, what I've been telling people all along is, back around March 15th, when the world shut down, the United Way and our agencies kind of redoubled our efforts, and I'm sure you're aware of the food banks that were opened and how our efforts doubled up trying to make sure that no one in the area went hungry. One of the things that we did in conjunction with a group of agencies was organize group of volunteers. We had about 120 volunteers who were furloughed from their positions, but wanted to go out and continue to help individuals in need. And we put them to work delivering food to seniors, homebound seniors, and others who were looking for assistance. So, the work of the United Way has been continuing. The problem that we're seeing, as everyone else, our revenues are down, our donations are down. Individuals who used to give to the United Way now find themselves in a position where they're seeking help themselves. So, I really appreciate the time that you've given me to address all of you, and I appreciate the work of the county. I have to say, I'd be very remiss if I didn't mention Jason Cavulich, who is online here, and Bill Browning from the Human Services Department. When everything started happening, I think Jason and I were on the phone almost hourly. Anecdotally, it got to the point when I was sitting at home and my phone would go off. Before I'd answer it, my wife would say, "Tell Jason I said hello", because that's how often we spoke on the phone. We are fortunate. I have counterparts in other parts of the Commonwealth who do not have the same working relationship that we have with county government and city government. And we were only able to do what we did because of this type of cooperation. So, my heartfelt thanks to everyone at the county for their assistance. And once again, I'm coming asking for your help. There are numerous individuals in the community, like I said before, who aren't able to give this year for various reasons. Either they've been furloughed or still furloughed, and are having great difficulty with their budgets. I will tell you, we're awaiting the second tsunami, which I've been referring to as the second tsunami, is when the moratorium is completely lifted and evictions begin to start hitting our community greatly. Right before this call, I was on the phone with Lackawanna Pro Bono, where we are setting up a system with the courts, the social service systems with the United Way and Lackawanna Pro Bono, to provide assistance for individuals who are facing evictions. Because we're quite positive that once December hits, it's going to be the second wave of individuals looking for help. So, I'm asking for your assistance and for your help, and your continued support as we move forward. And I thank you for everything that you've done for us over these many years. Jason, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
I just, again, thank you. Thank you for the support. Thank you for the time and allowing us to, you know, to help roll out the campaign, not only to our coworkers and counterparts in county government, but also to the greater community. It serves our mission in human services tremendously. And like Gary did say, we have a very unique partnership in our human service department with United Way that doesn't replicate itself throughout the Commonwealth. And the work we do together is far more impactful and meaningful than what we could do, you know, individually. And we really do change the lives and do better the lives of the citizens of our community because of the approach that we take here and the support we get from you, allowing us to take that approach. So, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity today to talk.
Any questions or comments or anything?
Oh, I would urge every employee of Lackawanna County to donate to the United Way from their paycheck. They can automatically withdraw that from their check. I think that's a great way to help a little bit. Doesn't have to be a lot of money. And if everybody would do that, it would certainly make it, you know, helpful for the United Way and for everyone involved.
Well, you know, Jer, if I could just add, I had just today, it's interesting. We had a woman stop in the office today, and she had seen some of the articles in the newspaper and whatnot. And she walked in and she handed me a $10 bill, and she said, you know, "I know it's not a lot, but there are people out there that are worse off than I am." And my response there was, you know what, we get a lot of large contributions, but it's the $10 and the $5 and the $2 contributions that keep us going. They're the foundation of the work that we've done. This, and as luck would have, in 1920, or 2020 and 2021, is actually our 100th anniversary. We've been in this community for 100 years, helping those in need. And as I've said to people, we've gone through floods, fires, tornadoes, hurricanes, all types of disasters. And I am absolutely optimistic we're going to get through this as well. Because people in this community really care. They care for their neighbors, and we're fortunate in that area. So, again, I thank you all, and also, please know that we're here. I mean, if you have constituents or clients who call you seeking assistance, please give us a call. I mean, we'll do what we can to help them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone, anything else? We'll move on to resolutions. 200216.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, approving current payables. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers 310782-311367, inclusive totaling $2,557,888.85. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $1,249,237.58. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 21st, 2020.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, resolution approved. Resolution 200212.
This is authorizing the submissions and revisions for the CDBG programs. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby authorize the submissions of revisions for the following community development block grant programs to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Number one. Lackawanna County, on behalf of the Borough of German, fiscal year 2014, Community Development Block Grant Program. The revision will transfer the funds from the water sewer improvement line item to the German Borough Delaware Street Stormwater Improvement Project, $4,126, to the Public Facilities Line Item for the Glenburn Township Building Ramp and Platform Project. Item number two, Lackawanna County, on behalf of the Borough of Archibald, FFY 2015, Community Development Block Grant Program. The revision will transfer funds from the Rehab Single Unit Residential Line Item for the Archibald Borough Housing Rehabilitation Project, $25,149, and the remaining funds from the Public Facilities Line Item for the Archibald Borough Building ADA Elevator Project, $40,000, to the Water Sewer Line Item for the Archibald Borough First Street Culvert Project. Item number three. Lackawanna County, on behalf of the Borough of Clark Summit, FFY 2015, Community Development Block Grant Program. The revision will transfer the remaining funds from the Street Improvement Line Item for the Clark Summit Borough Depot Street Improvement Project, $55,999, to the Street Improvement Line Item for the Clark Summit Borough ADA Pedestrian Audibles Project. Item number four, Lackawanna County, on behalf of the Borough of Dixon City, FFY 2015, Community Development Block Grant Program. The revision will transfer funds from the Rehab Single Unit Residential Line Item for the Dixon City Borough Housing Rehabilitation Project, $60,672, to the Street Improvement Line Item for the Dixon City Borough Bound Street Sidewalk and Curb Cut Project. Item number five. Lackawanna County, on behalf of the Borough of Dummore, FFY 2015, Community Development Block Grant Program. The revision will transfer funds from the Rehab Single Unit Residential Line Item for the Dummore Borough Housing Rehabilitation Project, $99,792, to the Street Improvement Lines Item for the Dummore Borough Mill Street Sidewalk and Roadway Improvements Project. Item number six. Lackawanna County, on behalf of the Borough of Taylor, FFY 2015, Community Development Block Grant Program. The revision will transfer the remaining funds from the Water Sewer Line Item for the Taylor Borough Jefferson Street Stormwater and Sewer Project Phase One, $35,024.54, to the Water Line Item for the Taylor Borough Jefferson, I'm sorry, the Taylor Borough Jefferson Street Stormwater and Sewer Project Phase Two. Number seven. Lackawanna County, on behalf of the Township of Springbrook, FFY 2015, Community Development Block Grant Program. This revision will transfer the remaining funds from the Public Facilities Line Item for the Springbrook Township Building ADA Restroom Project, $21,310, to the Public Facilities Line Item for the Glenburn Township Building ADA Grant Project. Item number eight, Lackawanna County, on behalf of the County of Lackawanna Non-Entitlements, FFY 2015, Community Development Block Grant Program. The revision will transfer the funds from the Rehab Single Unit Residential. The funds will be transferred to the following projects. The Public Facilities Line Item for the Glenburn Township Building ADA Ramp Project, $23,304.10. The sidewalks line item for the Mayfield Borough Little League ADA Walkway, $26,985. And the street improvement line item for the Jefferson Township Perry Road Street Improvement Project, $28,606.30. Be it further resolved that the county has complied with the terms of the Pennsylvania Act 179, and has met all criteria, have met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above mentioned revisions. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 21st, 2020. Here to speak upon that, Commissioners, is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Afternoon, everyone. This resolution states that the county is submitting a CDBG revision request on behalf of our Lackawanna County non-entitlement communities and Clark Summit, Dummore, Dixon City, and Taylor to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. The request moves money from completed or ineligible projects to projects that are current or near completion. This resolution is a standard requirement of the CDBG program, which ensures that there is citizen participation in the use of the funds. Anyone have any questions?
No.
If there's no questions from Brenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
Motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Resolution 200214.
Entering an agreement with the Career Technology Center. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County for the administration and operation of the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board Business Education Partnership Grant Project in the amount of $58,970 to provide varied career and occupational awareness activities for students, elementary through high school, from November 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 21st, 2020. Here to speak upon that again is Director Sacco.
I just want to say, Jerry, I think you said it was Resolution 2014. It's 2013, just so the record's clear.
I read 2013, yes.
No, you read it, but Jerry missed the number, just to be clear.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
This resolution states that the county is entering into an agreement with the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna for the administration of the Business Education Partnership Grant. And this was approved at a Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board meeting. The project in the amount of $58,970 will provide varied activities for students, elementary through high school, focusing on career awareness and options in manufacturing STEM education, technology, and communication fields. This grant continues the focus and efforts geared towards giving our students real life experience in various future career options. Anyone have any questions?
I do not.
If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we'll get to Resolution 200214.
This is authorizing ratifying a PCCD grant application. Be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby authorize and ratify the filing of a grant application and amendment with the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Law and Justice Supplemental Coronavirus Pandemic Funding. Whereas Lackawanna County has requested and been approved for funds in the amount of $127,946 to be used for offsetting costs associated with the Lackawanna County Prison, the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office, and the Lackawanna County Court System. And whereas Lackawanna County has submitted an amendment for additional available supplemental grant funding from the same program in the amount of $55,626 to assist with the Law and Justice System pandemic response. And now therefore, be it resolved, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Coronavirus Supplemental Program Grants on behalf of the Lackawanna County Law and Justice Pandemic Response. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 21st, 2020. Once again, this is Director Sacco.
This resolution is authorizing and ratifying the submission of the Law and Justice Coronavirus Pandemic Funding Grant to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. The county has been approved for $127,946 and an additional supplemental funding in the amount of $55,626. And this will be used for offsetting pandemic-related expenses associated with the prison, the DA's office, and the court system within Lackawanna County. Anyone have any questions?
They do not.
If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you, Brenda.
Aye.
Okay, resolution 200215.
Yes, Commissioners, this is approving a plan of hospital revenue bonds refinancing for the Lehigh Valley Health Network. Whereas Lehigh Valley Network, Inc., and certain of its affiliates, including Lehigh Valley Hospital, Inc., Lehigh Valley Hospital, Schoolkill, Northeastern Pennsylvania Health Corporation, Lehigh Valley Hospital Hazleton, Schoolkill Rehabilitation Center, Inc., Lehigh Valley Health Network Rehabilitation Center, Schoolkill, Pocono Health System and Pocono Medical Center, Lehigh Valley Hospital, Pocono, have requested that the North Hampton County General Purpose Authority to issue, in accordance with the plan of finance, up to $110 million in aggregate principal amount of its bonds to be designated as its hospital revenue bonds in one or more series issued at the same or different times. And whereas, the proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance the cost of a project consisting generally of, A, the financing, refinancing, or reimbursement of the costs of the construction, renovation, equipping, and miscellaneous capital improvements of certain healthcare facilities of the borrowers and their affiliates, including, but not limited to, the second phase of the construction and equipping of the Hectown Oaks Hospital Easton in North Hampton County, and the construction and equipping of the new hospital in Dixon City, Lackawanna County. Section B, the funding of any required reserves or capitalized interest for the bonds. And section C, the payment of the cost of issuance for the bonds. And whereas, the authority is a body corporate and politic organized by the County of North Hampton under the provisions of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Act 53 PACSA, Section 5601, Act 22 of 2001, effective June 19th, 2001, which codifies and amends the Municipality Authorities Act of 1945 as amended and supplemented, and whereas the act specifies that the purpose of the authority shall be for acquiring, holding, constructing, financing, improving, maintaining, and operating, owning, leasing either in the capacity of the lesser or the lessy projects, including hospitals and health centers, and whereas the act provides that none of the powers granted thereby shall be exercised in the constructing, financing, improvement, maintenance, extension, or operation of any project or projects which in whole or in part shall duplicate or compete with existing enterprises serving substantially the same purposes. And whereas the act further provides that the foregoing limitations shall not apply to hospital projects or health centers to be leased to or financed with loans to public hospitals, nonprofit corporate health centers, or nonprofit hospital corporations serving the public if the municipality organizing the authority for such projects shall declare by resolution or ordinance that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the area served by such facilities to have such facilities provided by or financed through the authority. And whereas pursuant to the act, the borrowers and the authority have requested Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to declare by this resolution that the project is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the area served by the borrowers. Whereas, Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, requires that the applicable elected representatives of the governmental unit on behalf of which bonds are issued and of each governmental unit having jurisdiction over the area in which any facility is located, approve bonds after a public hearing in order for a private activity bond to be a qualified bond under the code. And whereas the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners constitutes the appropriate elected representatives for the purposes of giving Section 147F approvals with respective portions of the project located within Lackawanna County. And whereas, in accordance with the requirements of Section 147F of the code, a public hearing was held by the authority on behalf of North Hampton and Lackawanna Counties on October 6, 2020, notice of which hearing, in the form of the notice of the hearing attached here to as Exhibit A, was posted on both the North Hampton and Lackawanna Counties' websites. Whereas, at the hearing, a reasonable opportunity to be heard was provided for all persons with different views on both the issuance of the bonds and the location in nature of the project facilities. Whereas, a copy of the public hearing report for the hearing is attached here to as Exhibit B, and the undersigned has been informed of the substance of all comments made and testimony presented at the hearing. And whereas pursuant to Section 147F of the code, the borrowers and the authority have requested the Board of Commissioners to approve the issuance of the bonds for the purposes of Section 147F of the code. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners as follows. One, the above clauses are incorporated herein and made a part hereof by this reference. Two, it is hereby determined and declared pursuant to the act that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the area served by the borrowers for the authority to undertake the financing of the project through the issuance of bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $110 million. Number three, the above declaration made with respect to the project extends to refunding bonds with respect to the project and any additional bonds necessary to complete the project, which may be issued by the authority, provided however that such declarations shall not be deemed to authorize changes increasing the scope of the project. Number four, the issuance of the bonds for the purpose of financing of the portions of the project located in Lackawanna County is hereby approved for purposes of Section 147F of the code. Number five, the approval of this project shall not obligate the taxing authority of this county or its funds in any way. Number six, the proper officers and other personnel of Lackawanna County are hereby authorized and empowered to take all such further action and execute additional documents as they may deem appropriate to carry out the purpose of this resolution. Number seven. Any resolution or part of any resolution conflicting with the provisions of this resolution is hereby repealed insofar as the same affects this resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Adopted at a regular board of commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 21st, 2020. Commissioners here to speak on that is Lehigh Valley Health Network Senior Vice President and Treasurer, John Brodsky.
Good afternoon, and I'm glad I didn't have to read that.
No comment.
But nicely done, but thank you for entertaining this resolution to allow the health system to move forward with this. Am I echoing?
A little bit.
Yeah, thank you for considering this resolution to allow us to move forward. As I think we described earlier in a prior discussion, LVH and the Lehigh Valley Health Network acquired this property as part of the assets associated with Coordinated Health System last December. And this property, which is approximately seven acres on Main Street, just a little bit north of Interstate 81, had been designated by, or intended by, Coordinated Health to build a hospital. There is a medical office building on the facility now. What is proposed is a new 100,000 square foot facility that will contain an emergency department, inpatient rooms, which will start at 24 beds with the capability to add an additional 24 beds. Will be an operating suite, procedure rooms, and obviously, support services such as radiology and x-ray, ultrasound. There will be a spot for a helipad located on the property. The existing medical office building will be upgraded and reconfigured as part of the project. We are hoping to begin, you know, construction fairly eminently, and it will expect it to take 20 months to complete. So, somewhere around spring, late spring of 2022, this will be coming online. Total cost for the construction and renovation are about $80 million, and we are looking to finance that through a bond issue, actually a direct placement with a bank of over about $110 million. The other proceeds will be used to complete the construction of the facility down in North Hampton County. So, I think that's it. I know there was a question asked previously about staffing at this facility. In the first year of operation, it would be about a total of 280, which constitutes about 100 medical staff and 180 general hospital staff. In the fifth year, that would increase to 340. Medical staff pretty much staying about the same, a little bit over 100, but general hospital staff growing to 230, and then by the 10th year, would be about 250 hospital staff, or a total of 360 employed FTEs on the site. So, it is a newer area for the health system. We have relationships with the medical staff in the area. We're very excited about this facility and becoming part of the, you know, the network of health providers up in Lackawanna County. Happy to answer. Any other questions that I can?
Well, thank you, John. About that, that was a very important question that the Commissioners had asked about how many jobs would be being brought into the area. Thank you for getting those numbers for us.
Certainly.
And Commissioners, today's resolution, the county is not committing any funds or any responsibility for the project. It's just asserting that it is in the best interest of all residents of Lackawanna County, their health and welfare, to go ahead with this project.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Do not.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. And I'll have a good day and, and stay safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board, Ms. Hart?
No, I did not receive any emails.
Commissioners, other business?
Yes, I'd like to say something. So at the last meeting, I talked about someone who I had known who had overdosed and we hear about those stories too much. So on the flip side, I want to talk about something positive. My assistant, Brian Doughton, on October eleventh, celebrated his sixth year of sobriety. And some people don't make it a month, a week or even a day. So the achievement that he has made and the strides that he's made in his life and in his career are just amazing and he is always not only trying to help himself, he makes sure that he doesn't stay complacent. He works a program, he works hard at it and he helps other people. And I just applaud him for that and congratulate him on six years.
He's a good man.
Congratulations, Brian.
Yep, good man.
Congratulate Brian on that.
Anyone else?
Just a quick reminder to the public about applying for an online ballot, for mail-in ballot. The, the, the end of that is October twenty-seventh, four p.m. we close the business here. If they want to apply for mail-in ballot, also all the polls will be open on election day. If they want to choose to poll to, to vote in person and our drop boxes are being well-used.
Over, over six thousand the other day, wasn't it, Brian?
It was six thousand in the first four days.
Six thousand first four days. Okay, on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Hey, everyone.